And made a decision based on how quickly this spreads. An example of that is the fire department in Aviling where they just got thirty-seven cases. How many?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, they're to forty-one now because it spreads so quickly. So he's taken that into consideration based on how close that salons and barbers have to work with people. They're right here in front of them when they're doing it. So I think he, and this is just an assumption, this is just my guess as to why he made that decision. He's wanting to slowly open so that we don't end up in a situation. He mentioned Singapore yesterday. He said Singapore started out with a lower amount of cases and then they opened back up and they have more cases in the second wave than they do in the first wave. So he's looking at all of the data and getting all the medical communities information and finding out how we should do it. He's trying to do it slowly so that we don't end up going the other way.
Well. I still, to me, it's gonna do this. The hell I say it. I don't know that anybody would die over being lazy, but it's gonna end up being just a bad deal going this way as it is.
I would love to open everything up, but I think that it has to be done carefully.
Yes, it would, just like we've done it from the beginning.
Sure.
That's what drives me right now. There's quite a few people didn't know if that deal in China was over.
Sure.
As far as I know, they're doing wonderful.
Which deal?
The.
Oh, the governor.
You know, they're doing what there's asked to get done.
Sure.
And I can't believe there's only people in the world that were doing it.
Right, well, I know the governor is still looking at other options. He's taking ideas and seeing how those will work for different communities. Every community's gonna be different. We're gonna be different from Aviling, we're gonna be different from communities the same size of us who have more cases because we have fewer. Unfortunately, he took it from our hands and said, this is how we'll be done. Any other comments?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Vanessa Winkler on the Cutting Edge.
Yes, ma'am.
Here in Snyder. Congratulations that you got your grant so that your salaries can be covered. Unfortunately, for all the hairdressers in Scurry County, we don't have that option. And I understand that it is a new point that you don't have control now. But before the closures, you did control. You closed us for several days before the governor mandated that you should.
Yes, ma'am.
Before I go on with my point, did you contact any salons and discuss their sanitation measures or anything they were doing for this virus specifically? Because I did things different, I added on. Did you contact any of those hairdressers before you decided to do that?
No, ma'am, I didn't, and I probably should have.
That is something that is very, has been very frustrating to me. That, like I said in our meeting.
Yeah.
Our sanitation laws, I believe, are very close to medical personnel.
Sure.
Medical personnel are right here in people's faces. They control that with masks, they control that with their garments that they choose to wear, their gloves. We could do the same thing, and we were doing the same thing. The only difference was the mask. We were not using the mask, that was the only thing. I don't know about other salons, but that was something we didn't. I know it's, we were all, like Mr. Farmer said yesterday, we were all doing a playbook that we didn't have a playbook for, we were all doing that. But in the future, when you are considering closing a business, it would seem appropriate to go speak to those. And know your, you know your business before you make a decision. You don't make a decision without all the facts, and you didn't have all the facts. And you chose to do that on your own. Now we're in a situation that we can't control because it's by the governor. That is a very frustrating place to be, and it is very frustrating to believe that I've lived in this community my entire life. I am a sixth generation Snyder resident. And Sarah Jamison and one other city council member has been the only person to contact me. You had your meeting Friday, but it feels like that's a little too late. I mean, yes, you were going to the governor for us, but we have not had any talks of how can we help you? Where's your, where's your business at? You know, the people, the men in this room that I voted for didn't come and check on me at all. And our community is small enough that that could have happened. There is only, I think, the last time I checked, twelve salons in Scurry County. And a lot of those are just individuals. There is no reason why nobody contacted us. There is things that could be in place. You could discuss, you know, the city could look at our utilities. You know, as an owner, I'm paying utilities on a business I might even get to use because I'm gonna have to pay the flat rate and the waste and all those things for a salon that I can't even use. And I feel like as a community, I mean, as our government officials that we elected, you should be fighting for us, and I don't feel like we're being fought for. At all.
Well, thank you, I appreciate those comments. And you're right, there, we didn't, I didn't contact the salons. And I should have, I'll admit that I should have. But we were taking the information that we had at the time based on medical advice. And we should have looked at a little more of the whole picture. I should have looked at the whole picture a little more. And I apologize for that, I do. I, I, I might have some regrets now, but we weren't far in front of the governor on that, we kind of saw where it was going. We wanted to protect our community as much as possible. We should have taken into consideration what your thoughts were. And, you know, we'll have to look at that in the future if we ever end up in a situation like that again. As far as where we stand now, I reached out to the salons to see how we go forward, to get your input on it. And so I was hoping that you would have some ideas, and I probably should have reached out sooner, and for that I do apologize.
Something else that you, that I feel like you guys have more control over, and I spoke with you about it in our meeting, is especially the businesses that they own their storefront. You know, you're gonna be getting FEMA tax relief. I feel like that we should be getting some tax relief. We are not being able to use our establishments for however many days this go on because he's saying he's gonna discuss it May eighteenth.
Sure.
But that's no guarantee of opening.
Sure.
And so I believe that there should be someone looking at how can we be, you know, compensated or relieved of some of that tax? Because ours is very high, and I, I have a problem with paying taxes for a business I can't use when I feel like I wasn't represented well.
Well, that's, to be honest with you, that's something I've been looking at since shortly after this happened. I haven't publicized that I've contacted the governor, the governor's office, about how we're gonna protect our taxpayers. But that was one of the first things I did, was look to the future on property taxes. And, you know, in a disaster, we can go up eight percent. I don't want to do that, there's no way I want to go up eight percent. I don't even want to go up the three and a half percent that we were talking about before. So there's some, my questions were then was how are we gonna relieve the taxpayers on this when property tax time comes up? And that was mid-March. And so I put that into practices to start finding out how we can protect y'all as property owners. So I hadn't put that out there because I just, it's, there's some things we do in these offices that doesn't necessarily get out of the public because we're trying to do this, but we're also trying to do several other things at the same time. So that thought is out there on how we can go forward. But, you know, the taxing entities are gonna be in a rough position as it comes because we're, we have a double whammy here. And we have the oil industry, which started to fall before COVID even started up. So we have that plus all the businesses that haven't been able to be open. So we're gonna have to look at how we're gonna go forward. That process has started, and I promise you, we're looking at every way we can to protect you from any kind of increase that we might see. We're hoping to get federal money and FEMA and some other federal monies that would supplement what we can't come up with or what we don't want to increase on the public. That's just my thoughts, I haven't talked to these guys about that at all. That's just me starting the process.
Well, and I need to clarify, when I say I don't think I was represented well, no, my voice wasn't heard.
Sure.
We, as, as an industry.
Yeah.
Nobody asked us and we were not able to speak on our own behalf. And I feel like the hair industry has been a sacrificial lamb to this.
Sure.
This deal, and, you know, we could go on about how the businesses are not following the guidelines like they should. There are a lot that are, and they're doing everything they can, and they're relying on their customers to abide, and that's a hard thing to do. But when you're, when you're the person being salary being completely cut to zero and your community looks like business as usual, and you go by Walmart and it looks like it's Black Friday.
Right.
It is very, and there's no way, there is absolutely no way Walmart is keeping their establishment sanitized for their capacity anywhere near what I could for my salon of maximum capacity of twelve.
Sure.
There is no way. And that is not right for them to be able to be open the way they are and me be closed. And I, I don't care how close I am. People are being close, I've walked in and seen people leaning on the counter face to face with the person they're talking to when they're making orders and things. That's gonna happen.
It is.
And we should have the right to work just like everybody else does.
I agree with that, yes, ma'am.
And I know, you know, it's water to the bridge, we can't change anything, but y'all said yourself, you got two-point-eight million dollars, I think you can spread that to, you don't want any small businesses to close? We're gonna have to work on getting some money to some of these places because out of five salon, out of five hairdressers in my salon, four are single mothers.
Sure.
With no child support, no other income. They are having to move out of their homes, moving with their parents because they have no income. And me doing here for thirty-six years, I've done two-hundred-and-sixteen hours of sanitation. We are required by law to do our sanitation rules. So we know better than anybody that you lock the door after each person, that you bleach down your station, that you change your clothes, you don't use your cape again. We already do that, we have to, because we're already required to do that anyway. But if you're not wanting any small businesses to close, we're gonna have to have some money somewhere. The DCOS, oh yeah, we'll do two thousand, we're gonna have the application in a couple of weeks, and we're gonna put all that in, and we're gonna see what and if we can do anything. But a thousand of that two thousand is gonna go toward advertising in our community. Well, my rent alone is a thousand, that doesn't include electric, gas, water, phone, cable, and the advertisement that I've already committed to for Snyder Tiger t-shirts, for Snyder Tiger baseball, for Snyder Tiger volleyball. That's also coming out of our accounts. And guess what, we're grounded here.
I understand that. Now, I can tell you, that grant is very specific in how it has to be used, and it's something that is done on a yearly basis. It has to be used on roads. There's no way that that money can be used for anything else. There's some other things that we would love to use it for, but we can't. And as far as the county giving money to people, it is against the law for us to be able to do that. We can't even advertise in the newspaper for something that we want to do. So it's, I wish there was a way that we could, you know, but.
Well, what are your ideas? What are we supposed to do, just drown?
Well, my question is, when we were talking, you were discussing the tax breaks and all that and not doing the tax rollback. Well, then you turn around and y'all go out and buy new trucks and new vehicles and all this is my understanding.
There were some things that were already in the twenty-twenty budget. When we set that budget up last year, those were things that were already in the budget.
Yeah, we have things already in our budget too, but guess what, it's gonna be.
I understand that.
What about the emergency fund? Where does that emergency fund benefit us? As small business employees?
There's not an emergency fund?
There is, we said we were gonna put that in the emergency fund, and it's there. Yeah, but we can't give that money, we can't give that money to citizens of the community.
Okay, I'm not asking you to give it to me personally, but help pay my, my business.
We can't do that.
I mean, I still have.
We legally cannot pay for anything for your business. It's against the law for us to do that.
But y'all can take our money for taxes and put it in the emergency fund, well, give us a tax break or something.
There are things that we're looking at to be able to give some relief. But we can't give people.
If we're not open in two months, three months, five months, we're not gonna have to worry about it.
Well, and I've contacted all of my debtors, and the only one that will not halfway work with me is Big Country.
Well, I don't know, I can't explain what private businesses do.
Have y'all gone to these utility people and say, businesses are closing down? They're still having to pay bills. Why is the city still?
This is the first, I've heard of Big Country. I do know that at the city of Snyder, that they have stopped cutoffs with the water department. We've stopped cutoffs with the Herblin Water. Atmos stopped cutoffs for the gas. I don't know about Big Country, this is the first I'm hearing about Big Country, but I got emails from these different companies and these different entities that said they are not doing any cutoffs during all these times.
Okay, but that's cutoffs. But what about these businesses that are not using the amount of service?
We can't control those. We have absolutely no control over private industry.
The city of Snyder, y'all have no control?
No, the city of Snyder is a completely different taxing entity. We can't tell them what to do. I couldn't tell one of these guys what to do because they're an elected official, much less tell the city of Snyder what to do. You're gonna have to talk to your city council about that. And I think the city, part of the city council was hearing that today.
Well, I can tell you, us hairdressers that I know, we've all been honoring all of your rules. We have not took our scissors or clippers home. Our husbands look like dogs. Just like you said, you haven't got yours done.
No, we haven't.
But, you know, we're trying to abide by the law, but your time on hand, we're gonna have to start doing illegal hair just so we can.
Well, we initially tied your hand for a few days. Shortly after we did, the governor did, and.
Are we being a strong enough voice to the governor?
No.
Scurry County needs to be a stronger, a stronger voice. Why have we not invited one of the state representatives to come and hear us?
I haven't heard anything from our state representatives at all.
But the phone works both ways.
It does, it does. I have heard more from our federal representative, Jody Arrington, than I've heard from either one of our state representatives. And I've talked to, I've talked to someone out of the governor's office, and I've spoken to someone on the legislative team, but I haven't heard anything from our local state representatives. So it does work both ways, and I have been talking to people outside of our community, but not specifically our representatives. Right now, I asked if there was gonna be a special legislative session to discuss any of this. There's no plan for a special legislative session. So to talk to one of our legislators right now really wouldn't do any good anyway. So going directly to the governor's office is the best way to do that. And I have sent a few emails off to the governor's office to let him know what we would like to do here in Scurry County. And the first time I did that, I got a response within a week. I wasn't expecting a response from the governor's office. And that's when I was talking about the taxing, what we were gonna do for our communities, for our taxpayers and our taxing entities when this comes up for our next budgets. I about fell out of my chair when I got a call from the governor's office. I was not expecting it. So there are some things in place, some things we're working on. There's some things we can do, but in a lot of things, our hands are just completely tied. And I wish there was more that we could do, but, you know.
Where they're not tied is where you can advocate for it.
Sure.
Would you say a lot more to him?
Sure.
About our salon.
Absolutely, I will.
I mean, because, like, just like we are under the number of five, so if our businesses can go to fifty percent, have him consider, you know, salons in that, that area. We don't have the same as a larger city. So.
I mean, I know about one person.
Any kind of capacity, one person at a time.
Yeah.
I mean, my salon could do that. I mean, I don't know any in Snyder that are big enough to where one person could work per day.
And we're willing to do that.
And we're willing to do whatever, just put us back.
Okay, we can do that, but we need your voices as well.
And I have been.
Okay, we need you to contact the governor's office on this as well, so.
I've sent out six emails this week.
Okay, to the governor's office?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. That's what it's gonna take, it's gonna take lots of voices because I can say that we need to start opening this up, and other county judges can say the same thing throughout the state and commissioners, but it's gonna take your voices. It's gonna, it's gonna take your voices to get that word to him and the rest of the community in Texas, the hairstylist community in Texas, to really get that big push.
Okay, back to Scurry County, what are we gonna do with the emergency funds?
That is.
Is that going to benefit us at all?
In what way?
In any way.
It will eventually, it could, yeah, but not in direct dollars to you. We simply cannot do that. It's illegal to do that. And so what that is for is if we had, I know we're in a disaster right now, but this would be more of a direct disaster. If we were in a situation where we didn't have money at that time to take care of a disaster, to get things back up into place if a tornado came through or something along those lines. Or if we absolutely had to next year to supplement our budget because we just weren't gonna get there, we could use that money that way. I don't want to do that. The idea is to build that reserve fund back up to where it's, to where if we did have a natural disaster that came through, tornadoes, fires like we've had before, then it would pay for things for our community at that time.
So does the wording say an act of God or whatever they say on the insurance forms as far as the emergency funds? Because this isn't emergency.
Sure, but right now Scurry County's okay as far as funds go.
Well, the people are not okay.
I understand that, but we cannot, I don't know how many times I can tell you.
I'm single, I'm not married, and in three months, they're gonna start foreclosure on my home.
I understand that, but I don't know how many, how, how I can tell you differently that there is no way that we can use those funds to give to the public. It's just simply not possible.
Well, they violated the Constitution and our rights, and that was okay, but it's not okay to pick us up and help us?
We cannot.
Well, they weren't supposed to violate the Constitution, but they did.
Okay, yes, ma'am, please.
Well, okay, so like Trump has not taken the salary to help the people out. Are any of our elected officials willing to give up any of their salary?
I do make donations, I do. And I help out wherever I can as far as with those that have needed some assistance. That's me personally, I can't speak for anybody else, and I'm not even gonna try to.
I just know I fix and lose everything.
I understand that, and I wish there was something.
In five weeks, no money.
I wish there was something that I could do, but there, at this point, the governor's order has to be followed. We have to follow that order, there's nothing else that we can do in that.
And I totally get that, but what I'm saying is, I don't feel like you or the other people are going to the state as far as an email here and there just doesn't, they're not gonna, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
True.
And I don't feel like we're being squeaky enough. And I say we, as people we have elected.
What scares me is, okay, in three weeks, because that is another twenty-one days from yesterday.
To open, it's a day that the.
And that's what I'm trying to get at, that don't mean. Nothing for that.
Sure, and I can't tell you that, what I've heard is that there is someone who's opening in the Dallas area. Come hell or high water, they're opening. But the governor's gonna meet with that person to look at how they're gonna do it. Hopefully, he'll get some ideas from them and go ahead and pursue opening up.
Maybe we should do it too then, maybe he'll show up here.
Well, that, I'm gonna tell you this though, if you do, it's not us that's gonna come after you, it's TDLR. And you know what TDLR will do to that.
Sure, we already know.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's.
We risk a fine with them.
You also risk losing your license.
Everything we own, our homes, our vehicles.
You also risk losing your license as well, from my understanding.
If I can't make a living now, my whole life is turned upside down.
I do understand that, but that's, like I said, this is the governor's orders. Hopefully, he will, he will look at some things and decide to open things up earlier. We have no control over that as much, we can, we can contact him, and you can contact him. Yes, ma'am.
As a people of this community, and you should be protesting the governor. We're a little town, we have how many people here and two cases of the coronavirus? I think our town is exceptional, and they should let us open up and go to work, and we should protest him to allow that to happen.
Well, I have contacted him, I'm gonna continue to contact him, but it needs to be your voices as well.
Would you put out the emails and the phone numbers, a list of everybody that we should contact?
Sure. I'll put that together.
So we don't miss someone?
Sure.
Also, here's another fund listed here that in a partnership with Goldman Sachs and the LIFT Fund, L-I-F-T Fund, along with other community development financial institutions for fifty million dollars. So there's another fund that's possible for you to look into to help you in your business.
Did you have some comments, Dan?
Well, I've got, I want to be sure we were saying was that. Moving forward, we're talking about some testing that's going on tomorrow at college.
Yes.
And I had a couple of questions about that testing, and I don't know that you can answer them, but I think you probably can. My first question about that testing is, how did, how did that testing come to be in Scurry County?
Okay, Governor just said, it's eleven days ago now, that he is going to get the National Guard to go out and do testing in rural communities. He was mobilizing the National Guard to do this. And he was, I can't remember how many it was, twenty-five hundred, three thousand National Guards, and they were gonna go to rural communities to do the testing. They chose who was gonna be tested. We had nothing to do with that. They let us know that the possibility that we could be one of those that's gonna be tested, but then they came back and said we would be one of those, I would be tested. I don't know the reasoning behind it, just know that they, the governor's office and TDM made the decision who would be tested. Now, I can't tell you that, we're not the only ones. They started, this crew started in Moore County, I think they went to Lamisa and then they came over here, or they're going to come over here. And then they're gonna continue on to other communities in this area and further out as well.
Okay, in looking at our numbers, and I'll be off a little, but, you know, on the daily briefing and the dirty numbers, for approximately three weeks, we've been testing pretty hard in Scurry County. And we tested forty-five one week and forty, another forty-four another week. This week, we've tested sixty-nine or seventy.
Sure.
Our testing capacity looked pretty good for our population in Scurry County.
Still is good.
My, my, and this is not necessarily a problem with this court unless this court has any influence. But this team has been to Moore County, which right now is a hotspot in Texas. Can't figure out why, but it is a real hotspot. They've been to Lamisa, which is bigger than, that has a bigger outbreak than us, and now they're gonna come to our community. I'm not, won't isolate everybody, I move around, I do my business the best I can and take care of things. But now the state is bringing a team of exposed people, and that's what they are, and putting them in Scurry County.
Right.
As well as inviting virtually every sick person within a fifty-mile radius of us or a hundred-mile radius of us, anybody that's showing symptoms, to come to our community, park in our community, be tested, and oh, by the way, don't go by Walmart while you're here. Now, now, these ladies right here have sacrificed their businesses. Our, our community has given up a lot of freedoms that we will probably never get totally back. And yet now, we're allowing, or however you wanna put it, we're allowing the state of Texas to bring, bring this right to our doorstep. And I have a real issue with that, especially in the fact that you made a comment, well, we'll see how many more we get with this new testing. We've been tested pretty hard.
We have.
And we haven't had a problem. So I don't care about this new testing, I don't care what they find, they may be bringing it to us.
Amen.
You know, I had someone ask me if I was gonna go be tested. I said, why would I put my body over there into a facility, even if it's drive-by, that could be carried? into a facility, even if it's drive-by, that could be carrying it?"
So I guess my statement was, you said they didn't ask.
Right.
But did we protest that being brought into our community at all?
My understanding is there's no choice to it. This is, this is, this is gonna happen in, in these communities. So, that's my understanding as far as, no, no, I didn't protest, but my understanding was this was going to happen. So.
With that being said, where did you get that understanding? Where can I read your understanding that we couldn't say, "Please do not bring this to our community. We're doing fine. We've got enough testing. Go somewhere else."
I'm reading, I hear that it's papers right. I'm not talking about your paper, Roger. It shows that we never was supposed to come to there.
Come to where?
They weren't ever supposed to come to here.
Okay.
It was a green line from, I don't know how far east it went, right below Snyder, all the way across there to Mexico borders, uh, on that thing you use all the time, Facebook thing. And we weren't even supposed to, to get anywhere near it. Then the next day, there we was in the damn thing.
My question too is if they are testing positive in Scurry County, does that, and they don't live in Scurry County, they just come here to be tested, does that make our numbers go up?
No, it's the community that they're from. If someone from Nolan County or Fisher County, and I'm not pointing anybody out, but any of the county surrounding us come to Scurry County and they get tested and they're positive, it counts towards that county.
And I totally agree with that, but everything else we've done from your original order was posted, and we got it and read it. The state has, the governor did his order, and we get it and we read it. What was put out to say it is mandatory that Scurry County step aside and allow the state of Texas to bring people that we know, if they were in Moore County three days ago, I'm not knocking these people for doing their job, but they were exposed in Moore County three days ago.
Okay, well, let me tell you this.
How can we, we made decisions based off of the medical advice of some of our medical people right here in our county to ruin these ladies' lives. But we can't let our health officials and our officials have any effect on having a discussion with the state of Texas about bringing people that we know are exposed right here to our backyard tomorrow.
By the time that you, we can protest, there's no doubt. We can talk to our representatives at any time and our governor. But if you will go to the governor's website and read Testing Texas, you can see that this is their intention and the only way that they'll see going forward to reopen our state economy. I bet you how it is, but it might have COVID on it.
I've, I've, I've read the thing. I totally understand that, but it was announced two days ago or three days ago now that they're coming. And at that time, did our county, based off of our county health people saying, "Hey, you know what? We don't, we don't have a problem. Let's don't add to our problems by bringing these people here." Did anybody contact the state and say, "Hey, we're not against testing, but do we really wanna bring that to a county that is this clean?"
I can tell you that I didn't do that, okay? And the reason is, is because this is done throughout the state. And I, I, now, and I know they're taking precautions. I, I can't guarantee that, that one of those people did not get infected. But I know they're taking precautions. My understanding is they're doing it every 10 minutes. They're swapping out everything that they're wearing between each person that they're testing. They're, they're taking precautions. So, and then to, uh, to go forward with that, I don't know how we would, we could say, "Yeah, we, we don't want that," but when I found out, it was a short amount of time before I actually put it out, I found out that there was a possibility, a possibility that this could be, that it could be, nobody came to me and said, and I put that, I said that in here. I said, "There's a possibility." Nobody, until now, until you were saying it right now, came to me and said, "We don't want it. We don't want the National Guard to come in." So, my thinking is, I, I don't necessarily have that, that, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing that they're coming in and doing more testing. I don't know that it's a good thing. I really kinda stand in the middle of it to see where we're at, because there are people who will not go to a hospital to get tested. I got a little bit of cough, a little bit of tightness in my chest, but it's not bad enough that I need to go to the hospital. I don't feel like I have this, and I don't wanna get charged for getting this test. I don't know if they're trying for it or not. But the National Guard's coming in, here's an opportunity for me, and this is just speculation, okay? I have this little bit of cough. Do I have COVID? Have I been spreading it around? I can see that curiosity factor as to whether somebody would wanna go out there and get tested. So, no, I didn't go, I didn't protest it, and nobody asked me to protest it either. So, if you want me to protest it, I will talk to the governor and.
I would, I personally would prefer that they not come here tomorrow. Strictly because, and it's, and it's not, it's not because I don't want testing. It's not I'm against testing.
Sure.
But we've got a clean county here.
Sure.
Anybody that has ever dealt with herd, and that's what this boils down to, herd medicine, knows if you've got a clean herd, the last thing you want is to take a chance on bringing in anybody that, anything that might be positive.
Sure, and I can tell you.
And I'm telling you, that truck coming from Moore County is positive.
I could tell you that, I can, I, I can say that we have members in our community who don't, do not want this testing to come in. I, I can do that, but I can't guarantee that they're gonna say, "Okay, we won't come."
Well, I appreciate that, and, and I guess my gripe will be, you said I didn't come to you the day you put it out and said I don't want that.
At no point, no, nobody, I'm not saying you.
I understand, but I'll take the blame. I'll say me.
Came to me.
Nobody came to you and said that. What day exactly did we get notice that they were coming?
I mentioned that last Tuesday.
No, no, no. Actual, actual day was the date they were coming.
The date that I put that information out there was Saturday. That was the information that I had was to put it out.
Yesterday was Monday, the first business day.
Sunday. I was told to put it out 48 hours before.
Okay.
That's the information that came from the state, was if we hold, hold the information, which I had the information Saturday, put it out on Sunday. That, it was coming. We, that's when all the information went out.
And yesterday was the first business day, and some of us are still trying to make a living. We wasn't in town yesterday, and we were coming to this meeting this morning. So, I, I will, I will take the blame that I didn't come by here yesterday and gripe about allowing the state to infect our county.
But nobody even questioned.
I'm, I'm not speaking for nobody. I'm speaking for myself.
Okay.
I apologize to the rest of the county that I didn't come by yesterday and voice my opinion. But now I am voicing my opinion, and they are not here yet. They're in Lamisa today. And I think probably there is some things that can be done. And I think if you, as a group especially, go to the state today and say, "We have a little issue", they might change their mind.
I will call our representative as soon as we get out of here and let him know that there are people in the community. And you're speaking for yourself, and you're speaking for yourselves. I don't know that you're speaking for the whole community, but you're speaking for a group, okay? I don't know what the other half of the group says, or the other part, other group might say, that there is gonna be another group that says they want testing. I will tell our representative, our Texas Department of Emergency Management representative, that there is a group that does not want our test, that wants the testing to come to Scurry County. I will call them as soon as we get out of.
And the reason why?
And the reason why.
Not, not that we're against testing.
No, it's because you're concerned about this group coming in from Moore County, bringing in cases into our county.
Give them those tests to the hospital and let our people stand out there. Why do they have to come into our?
They don't actually go in the hospital when you get a test done anyway. They do it out in the ER.
This was a governor's decision.
Right.
Yes, I'm with you on that, but so, I mean, why he didn't do it that way, I cannot answer that question.
And if they were really concerned and they didn't want to sit in the hospital, they could drive to Lamisa, just like we could drive to Lamisa for, for those.
Or Fisher County can drive to Scurry County for a test.
I just don't understand it, that, that we don't have a problem. I, I just don't feel like we have a problem. I thought we had a great healthcare system here. We did the mitigation, we protected them, we didn't overrun them. I think they've done a great job.
It's gonna be the.
And then they just get this jerked away from them, and instead, the state health, the state health people say, "Oh, here, we're fixing to dump a bunch of people in town that very well may be exposed. We were supposed to go 14 days after being exposed, and we know if they were in Moore County the day before yesterday, they were exposed. There is no doubt about that."
Well, I, I don't know what to tell you, other than it came from the governor's office.
Well, I would appreciate the court, as a whole, today making a statement to the Department of Health or whoever.
I can't tell you that, that, well, we can't vote on that because it's not on the agenda.
I agree.
Okay, and.
I agree.
I, all of us may have a completely different opinion.
And he said he would call them as soon as the meeting was over and get that stuff in the mail.
Man, every one of you that is against this needs to voice your opinion to the governor as well.
And that's why I ask for all emails and calls.
Because you reinforce what we said.
Right.
You can go to govTexas.gov, and you will have all the contact information you need right there on govTexas.gov.
And did that, does the govTexas.gov also list all the, I don't know, things like you were talking about that we could apply for?
That, that's in the governor's, at the very end, in the bibliography of Texas, helping Texas.
It's on the DSHS website. It's put in, in your search menu, put in DSHS Coronavirus, and it'll bring you up, uh, that page, and in the middle of the page is the link to get this report, and it has all information.
Our Google DA 18, and you're gonna get the same thing.
Well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate your comments. I really do. We are gonna agree on a lot of things. We're not gonna agree on everything, so, uh, one thing we do know is that we want to get back to work, and I want you to get back to work. And I'm sure everybody up here wants you to get back to work, but right now our hands are tied as far as what they're gonna allow. Contact the governor's office, let him know what your opinion is, and I'm gonna do it as well. And I know you've come up with some good ideas, and I know you're gonna do it safely because we had that discussion on Friday. So, hopefully, he'll listen to what we have to say for our community. Moving on to another portion of this, as far as opening up offices in Scurry County, I mentioned some ways. Olivia, we talked, talked a little bit yesterday about the library. What are your thoughts as far as the 25%, 50% opening up at all?
I know our patrons are just as ready as we are to get back to the norm. 25%, I think, to start off would be good, only for the fact that we're a high-traffic area and high-traffic for senior citizens. Right now, though, we, we have to go in and set up the distancing and figure out a way to create that to where the distance is there, the procedures, the hand sanitizing, that if we're gonna ask them to wear masks, would we provide them, all those questions are in the areas of right now. I can tell you that we do not have the supplies for the public for when they come in. It's something that we have to scramble to get by Friday, if Friday is going to be our opening day.
Sure. Okay, any thoughts on that?
We're starting out. Let's see where it goes.
Yeah.
Things. If we can't stop the testing, we, okay? For the tests they do do, we should have results by Friday, correct?
Should, yeah.
Should.
Yeah, our understanding is government, that if we go with a 25% until we know good, better, and different.
Sure.
Then we'll know which way to go. Going forward, yeah. That's just my, my view.
But what I hear her saying is they don't have the supplies. They're asking for supplies so they can have people come in.
Absolutely, and, and we hadn't gotten quite to that point yet, so, um, that was what I was gonna bring up next. We can look into supplies as far as gloves and masks, and that, that can be the caveat to if we. Do we, do you wanna require everybody to wear a mask when they come in?
If possible.
Okay, I would.
That would be great for.
I would tend to agree with that. As for, would anybody disagree with requiring people to wear masks?
One, one little comment about that, and I'll just throw it out there.
Yeah.
We should check whatever happened yesterday with the Supreme Court on that.
I, I know, as.
Not required by law.
So, yeah, it's not required by law. That's, that's absolute good caveat to it, because I know there are some, uh, there are some counties that have been sued for requiring people to wear masks.
There were some counties writing tickets last night.
Let me ask you this. I mean, what, we're all good with wearing masks, but what about gloves?
Yeah.
Even going into Walmart, you can step up and, you know, bring stuff in.
Yeah, and we had that conversation on Friday about gloves was, you know, we're gonna touch our face, we're gonna do different things, whether we're wearing gloves or not, and so the possibility of transferring there. And I think the main part of that is gonna be washing your hands or sanitizing your hands. So, I don't know that wearing gloves would necessarily be a requirement, but I, I would say a mask. The mask is gonna protect, me wearing a mask protects you more than it protects me, so, uh, in, in case I were a carrier. So, that's, that's my understanding of that, so.
One other thing that I would like to suggest, and it was brought up to me by someone else, is when we are going to restaurants and they have their gloves on, well, they're taking money from us and they're handing us food with the same gloves that they just took.
Without changing the gloves.
I mean, I feel like we need one person to take money and another person to hand out food or change out gloves in between. And you just handle that dirty money from, gosh knows.
Sure, and that's recommendations we can make, but I don't know that we can.
The governor is recommending that it is, uh, other, other methods other than cash be used for the purchase of, of food and product. Of course, Bill Gates is wanting us to go to a cashless society where they inject you with a microchip, then you can do all of your door openings and your cashless society, right?
Isn't that in Revelation?
Yeah, it is. The patent number is 06060640, so.
Are you serious?
Yeah, I'm serious.
Did you say anything a lot about this, did anyone check you?
Not even my mouth, a lot.
I'm not much into conspiracy theories, but that, that makes you wonder.
That does worry me a little bit.
Okay.
It's coming.
So 25% capacity, if we can get you masks. You, you want gloves for your employees?
Definitely, because that's another thing that I was gonna say. I've been doing the curbside service, and so after each transaction or interaction, I switch out gloves.
Sure.
I don't use the same pair of gloves, and so, just myself.
Sure.
That hasn't been going by quite, I think, almost out of the box that we have. Would we stick to Friday?
If you can get those supplies in time.
Yeah, as long as everything's in place, I would say yes. And also, I spoke to the Health Department about this this morning. They would like to come over and see what cleaning supplies you have, what you're using, and make any recommendations, that there are any changes that they would suggest.
We have a outlet to purchase those supplies. I know you line that catalog. I don't, I guess y'all get it. They had surgical as well as N95 masks.
Did they get more in stock?
Yeah, then we can, we can look at that. And then if you don't get them in for a week, then, of course, we can look at some other options as far as giving you some masks before then, if, if we can. Okay, so everybody look with that part about the senior center. You don't wanna keep it. And it's going now. I know they're doing more out the back door than they were having to come in. I think that's our, that's the one place that we wanna protect. Uh, also, in the governor's order, he mentioned the nursing homes, guidelines for those, and I'm kinda thinking of going, I'm kinda thinking, stay with the same guidelines for the senior center as the nursing homes. They're not allowing visitors still in the nursing homes, so, um, I would think continue operations the way they are at the senior center.
Actually, that's, we can't, we can't change it anyway.
Right. Well, we could allow indoor dining, uh, for seniors, but I, I would rather, I hadn't talked to Tammy about this yet, but I did talk to the Health Department about it.
Well, it's, it's, it's working, so.
Okay.
Of course, I, and this is just a moot point, since that's what we've been talking about. I don't, I don't know, I don't understand the governor. Open movie theater. Not letting off here. I don't. And I don't.
They are requiring them to have several seats between the movie, which I agree, no.
You could sit out like that.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing some things that I don't understand at these.
The bar shop out here, you, you're gonna be sitting in a car. You could sit out there in a car and you get a number, the ladies could come up there, wave that number and coming out, you go in. It's, it's workable. That's what burns me up.
My question is.
A good, if the one.
There, there are guidelines in here.
They do have guidelines, yeah. And specific to limited years.
Yeah.
I noticed there was a Alamo Drap House is choosing to not open.
Sure.
They're not opening.
Well, I thought some tattoo parlor got to order some of us. I thought it come on the TV yesterday, I don't. I couldn't figure out where, I don't know if it was in Texas, but I was saying someone somewhere opened a tattoo deal with us.
Yeah, I don't know if they were allowed to or not. Uh, same with you, sir, is it closing for him? All right, uh.
Nursing home.
There are specific requirements that they have and they're still not allowing, uh, visitation. But they, they're, there's outline in here for what nursing homes have to do. Okay, any more discussion on the?
As far as the masks at the library.
Uh huh.
My suggestion would be have them available for people that want them because I don't think you want to force them to wear them. That's just my opinion.
Okay. What do you think about that, Olivia?
I agree.
Okay. All right.
I have one. Yes, sir. What about the courthouse as far as the offices?
That, that's gonna be up to each elected official as to whether they want to open their office or not.
Will be open Thursday. Will be back open to the public in the clerk's office on Thursday.
The courthouse itself is open and has remained open.
Okay, but that'll be each individual office, the.
Yes, each individual.
Danny Young's office.
Sure.
Which one, they're gonna decide that.
That's right. Thank you.
There is one thing that we do need to keep in mind, because others know what's going to happen. They, that should this fail, that under DA fourteen, eighteen, the governor may by proclamation return any county to the essential services only level.
Right.
And that's what worries me, is that if we do open too quickly and this does spread, then we're going to be mandatorily taken back, which is going to destroy our county.
I just have another question. Why is five o'clock somewhere essential?
Like I'm.
That came straight from the top, the governor's office.
I just don't get it.
They, they, they considered alcohol and tobacco essentials, so that, like I said, that came down from the governor's office. People out that, elected officials offices, they are still, they're open, but not, they may not open to the public. They can still be contacted. Business will still be conducted as it has been. It may be over the phone or you might have to do something over the internet, but there are, all the offices, you can still do something at their office.
Well, there are a couple of services that have to be done in face to face. There are a couple of things that have to be done face to face that have not been able to be done now and going on four and a half weeks or whatever.
Like what, what?
Uh, you can't, you can't transfer a title on a card.
Okay.
You, you can't do that anyway except for face to face.
If you'll call them, they will give you.
I, I understand that. I was just, and, and I haven't had that problem. I was just asking if they were, you know, how it was, what it was gonna be. And if that's gonna be posted somewhere.
Okay.
So that, so that we can look and see what office, and even, even the appraisal office, and, you know, those different things, if they are gonna be, be posted on the website or whatever.
The appraisal office probably won't be on ours because they're not part of Scory County.
Scory County Appraisals?
Yeah.
County appraisal office is not, but it's not Scory County.
That's like Scory County abstract.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not a, they're not a part of Scory County. They're their own entity.
I think there should be dates listed because the people for titles, when I called, you know, we can't do a title to their person. Well, when are you planning to open? You have no idea.
Right.
That's an essential service to.
The tax office?
Tax office is part of it.
Okay, yeah, the tax office, yes, but the appraisal district is not.
But I'm talking about tax office. There needs to be a date of when they plan to reopen.
Sure.
So the community will know, we can start taking care of business. And the answer we get is, we don't know yet.
Sure.
So.
Most business can be done through them if you call them.
Most can, but you still cannot do a title.
Right. But I think, I think even the governor's figured that out and, and has allowed you to do things that you couldn't otherwise do um, in beforehand, before the disaster or so.
I think he also ordered that they, they could be open. We just need a date when we're gonna open ours.
Okay. All right.
The tax assessor, she says that Friday they will open and work through the door barriers and the tax office.
Okay. So Friday, the tax office will be open and more physical barriers, so those, those things can be done. May first. All right, uh, what do you want to do with this order?
Send out my motion.
Good, thank you. All in favor?
Uh, thank you.
You abstained. All right, thank you. All right, so our stay-home order is expired. Uh, court to discuss and consider resolution for countywide voting. Uh, we did countywide voting, but we didn't have the resolution, so.
Again, little, got, kinda got my cart before my horse there.
Thank y'all for having me. Thank for your words.
Terry, you made the motion?
All in favor?
Are you voting?
I didn't hear. I didn't know what we were voting on.
It's just the resolution that we agree, y'all agreed last week to do the countywide voting permanently. Okay.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Put together, would you accept it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and I have one for everyone.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, go ahead and you can have that. Uh, court to discuss and consider EMS Cures Relief Funds to be placed in EMS Investment Fund. All right, so y'all have something that says Cures Provider Relief Fund? That's what this is, twenty-nine thousand two.
Cures Provider Relief Fund to be placed in the EMS.
I think I put it with a last month, with a last week to do.
All right, we have a motion in a second to put the, in a third, to put the EMS Cures Relief Fund into the EMS Investment Fund. I'm, yeah, I'm just letting you know what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we're not gonna vote just yet.
Okay, great.
You got some, you have some questions about it? Okay, what are your questions?
My question is, I'm gonna get this out of here. I think he had a real good deal, the first deal he made.
That grant?
Yeah, no, uh, got this fund over here.
Okay.
Can it not have nothing, whatever, not a fund.
Okay, let me, let me kind of explain this, what this is.
So by putting it into the EMS Investment Fund, it saves it only for EMS and it gains interest at the same time. Uh, disaster is declared finished, whenever that may be, they will start sending out teams to do audits. If they don't, because, I mean, it's.
Okay, how long is this thing?
Stays there until it's pulled out.
Uh huh.
Correct.
stays in there until you pull it out.
Let me explain.
That's great.
We have to have this money in a trackable fund. We can open up in a check.